Call to order the public hearing pertaining to an annexation agreement regarding the property at the northwest corner of Towanda Avenue and Beach Street, the Carden Springs PUD. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Loren?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
I'm required to read this three times at a public hearing. Does anybody wish to be heard on the matter of the annexation agreement for the Carden Springs PUD? Second time, does anyone wish to be heard on the matter of the annexation agreement for the Carden Springs PUD? And third and final, does anybody wish to be heard on the matter of the annexation agreement for the Carden Springs PUD? Hearing none. The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Loren?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye. And the public hearing is adjourned and we will start the council meeting in about four minutes.
Joe Rowland. Call to order a regular meeting of the Normal Town Council for Tuesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Please call the roll. Sorry.
Ms. Loren?
Here.
Mr. Nord?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Preston?
Here.
Mr. McCarthy?
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
We have no public commenters on our agenda items tonight, so we move directly to the omnibus agenda. The omnibus agenda items are considered under one vote, considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion unless a council member wishes to pull items from the agenda to vote on them individually.
I just would like to be excused from any bills, I think.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Item E.
E as in Edward. Thank you. All right. Please call the roll. Oh, I need a motion. Thank you.
I'll second.
And then I need to read. All right. Items up for vote is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of January third, twenty twenty-three. Also, a report to receive and file town of Normal expenditures for payment as of January eleventh, twenty twenty-three. A resolution authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with McLean County for centralized booking services. A resolution authorizing the executive execution of an intergovernmental agreement for the police shooting range facility with the city of Bloomington. And F, a resolution conditionally approving the final plat for the Weldon Reserve subdivision at Beach Street. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Loren?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Ms. McCarthy?
Aye. And the motions carry. We have one item. We have item E, a resolution to accept a proposal from Consulting Engineering Incorporated for water distribution system leak detection survey service. Ms. Smith?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Although this was a rather routine item, expense-wise, in my email exchanges with the city manager, there were some items that she highlighted that were the rationale between doing it every other year as well as the reason for having it as a single-year contract. And specifically, it was referenced as limiting cost inflation unknowns. And if she could just share the information she provided to me for the public record, I think it's useful for everyone to understand what this program does and why we're just doing it for one-year contract.
Sure. The town since 2010 has had a contract with a vendor to detect leaks in our water distribution system. Generally, those contracts have been multi-year contracts. Our most recent contract with M.E. Simpson was a two- or three-year contract. In this particular instance, the vendors that suggested or provided a proposal responded as a one-year duration of which we agreed for a couple of reasons. Certainly, we believe there is value to a regular leak detection survey, so we can find out what is happening with the distribution system. And a one-year agreement in this instance does a couple of things for us. It allows us an opportunity to try this new vendor. It also allows us to react a year from now with perhaps some more known situations of economic impact, material chain issues, supply chain issues, and things like that that are today a little bit unknown for some of our vendors. So we agreed to a one-year, or we're recommending a one-year contract in this instance.
Thank you for providing that clarification on that point. And then in terms of the leaks as a problem for the system, those have been going down since the system, the survey process was implemented, correct?
Yes, and specifically in terms of major leak, yes. But we find value in terms of continuously doing an analysis to find out maybe what has changed since the last time a survey was done.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
No one else? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Ms. Loren?
Aye.
Ms. McCarthy?
Aye. And the motion carries.
We move on to general orders. We have one item. We have a resolution approving an annexation agreement pertaining to thirty-six acres at the northwest corner of Towanda Avenue and Beach Street, Carden Springs PUD.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions?
If I, if I may, I'd like to start the conversation. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing staff to introduce this item. This is a particular matter that has gone through the Planning Commission process. I'm going to ask Ms. Davison and Mr. Trummell to come forward. They're going to take a few minutes, if council's all right with that, take a few minutes to do an overview of the project and what is before you this evening. This, what we are asking council to do is approve an annexation agreement. This is in follow-up to the public hearing that you just held earlier this evening. And so, Ms. Davison, if you could give us a summary, that'd be helpful.
Sure. So yes, as Ms. Reese noted, this is the annexation agreement that is before you tonight. Because the applicant doesn't yet own the property, the council can only take action on the agreement itself. Although within the agreement, after the agreement, if it were approved, the applicant would then close on the property and return to the council with the annexation, the rezoning, and the preliminary PUD. But as far as what's being proposed within the scope of this agreement, the rezoning that they're asking for is R3A, which is medium-density multifamily. And then they have presented a preliminary PUD for review. That includes four hundred and seventy-seven residential units. It would be a mixture of townhomes and apartments, a mixture of parking types, some on the surface, they're not really lots, they're like surface spaces along the drive, some detached garages and some attached garages. There would be three access points off of Beach, a clubhouse that would include a fitness center, parcel delivery, co-working space, and other amenities, an in-ground pool, pickleball courts, a dog park, a tot lot, and several locations for grills. They're also providing electric vehicle charging stations at nine different locations throughout the development and a trail around the entire perimeter, including a segment on Towanda that would ultimately be owned and maintained by the town. Also, within the agreement, other provisions are addressed, including the dedication of fifteen feet of right-of-way along Towanda, which will permit the expansion of Towanda someday. Also, as a result of a traffic impact analysis that a third-party engineering firm did, they will be constructing a left-turn lane off, well, on Towanda. So basically, northbound Towanda, turning left onto Beach, there would be a left-turn lane that they would build before two-thirds of the units are occupied. The agreement also talks about a timeline for the payment of development fees. And if there are only two variances requested in this proposal, one is very minor. It's a monument sign that is one foot taller than code permits. The second is for some of the buildings to be three stories instead of two. It's kind of a technicality, but all of the buildings that are adjacent to the existing R1 and R2 homes, so basically, any building in this development that's adjacent to Wintergreen or across the street from Evergreen Villas would be two stories. And then the buildings kind of more on the interior of the development and up against the interstate would be three stories. Of course, we recommend in favor of this plan, as you read in the report, for many reasons. It is designated as a Tier One site in the comprehensive plan, which means it is adjacent to all necessary services, infrastructure. It's an infill site. It also meets the goal of providing denser housing in a format that we haven't really seen, so it adds a little diversity to our housing stock. It certainly would address our current housing need. And we've had housing studies that have shown not only that we need more housing units, but we need more multifamily units. And this is a really high-quality product, which will appeal to a nice segment of the population. And then finally, it exceeds our planned unit development requirements in many ways. They're providing significantly more green space and amenities than we require by code, and the buildings are very attractive. So we're very confident in recommending in favor of this, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Nord?
Thank you. In the annexation agreement, they're being, their fees are being paid in four annual installments, and we're waiving interest on the ones that accrue interest. Why is that?
So typically, when someone comes in and has like a preliminary subdivision plan approved for hundreds of lots, they don't pay fees on that until they start to final plat the lots that they plan to develop. And you always develop in phases. Nobody ever plats four hundred and seventy-seven lots at one time. So because this would come in as one lot, though, technically, all the fees would apply. So all the parkland and school land fees in particular that are based on like a per-unit basis, those would all be due at the same time, even though we know this is going to take a few years to build out. So as a way to help allow the, like, revenue coming in from the development to match up better with the development fees that are owed, we thought it was reasonable to phase them over a four-year period in equal installments. We wanted to just frankly get it over with, though, in the first four years and not actually try to tie it to precise, you know, building A, building B, building C. So this is a really nice, clean way to get the fees paid, but in a, in a way that really does suit the way the development is going to happen.
So Wildwood, when they came in and they did their big warehouse development, which now Rivian, or I guess Phoenix has, they didn't pay all the fees upfront either. And then it went bankrupt. And the new developer came in, and some of those fees, taxpayers never got paid back because they did something similar. One of the excuses was because of the bankruptcy, we couldn't charge them these development fees. So with this annexation agreement, I mean, I hope nothing happens that this developer would go bankrupt in these four years. But what assurance do the taxpayers have that they're going to get these developments, these paid, if a new owner happens to come in because of a bankruptcy?
Well, I mean, we would certainly be able to hold up any additional occupancy permits, so they would not be able to continue developing if they were in breach of the contract, as I understand it, so.
There's a couple of other triggers that are tied to permitting based on certain improvements taking place. And it's probably worth noting as well as that, and again, not that it's an apples-to-apples comparison, the, you know, the fees from the Wildwood Carrot Road project were probably in the order of forty or fifty thousand dollars, which is money. It's real money. Just for the context of this site, though, the development fees on this site are approaching a million dollars. So we don't think it's an unfair request for them to ask to disperse this, because again, they're going to likely develop this property over, I would say, probably minimum three years. I think in their mind, maybe four or five. So we don't think, we didn't think it was an inappropriate ask.
Is this contract written or secure so we don't get into a situation like that again?
Yeah, in fact, this situation is the exact opposite of the Wildwood situation. In that case, there were no fees under the ordinance. There were just fees that were imposed under the agreement. And that was what caused the problem, because they were outside of any cap-on zones. We had special cap-on fees. In this case, there would be the fees that would be imposed by ordinance. So even if they went bankrupt, whoever would come in to develop the property would have to pay all of the fees.
Okay. Thank you for putting that on the record.
Ms. Smith?
The density that you mentioned, the four hundred and seventy-seven homes on the thirty-six acres, is that standard for the zoning that this property will have?
Well, the zoning would actually permit it to be quite a bit denser, although we never see the amount of density code actually permits. And it kind of comes down to how large is the size of any given unit, so.
We did do several parallels or analysis across other, this is without question the largest single development that will be in the community. Probably the closest to it would be Ironwood Gardens, which is around four hundred and sixty units on twenty-five acres. So their density is more in the order of seventeen or eighteen units per acre. Pretty consistently, we see PUD density ranges somewhere between maybe twelve on the low end. This, I think, is like thirteen and a half, maybe approaching.
Thirteen point two five. I got my calculator out.
And then as high as maybe eighteen or nineteen units per acre. But as Ms. Davis said, the code would allow for up to twenty-three units, but that's kind of difficult to achieve that density and provide parking and green space and that kind of thing, so.
So is the zoning for the entire project, the entire PUD, the same, or, and it's the R3?
R3A, medium density, yeah.
Is, how does this density compare if this had been a regular subdivision? Would there have been, would they, would they have been restricted to a different zoning? Because I understand, the reason I ask is at the, at the planning hearing, this project came and the subsequent one that was under discussion was not a PUD, and there was some slight confusion in the audience.
It's hard to just say very easily, because within a PUD, of course, they're not providing all of the public rights of way for public streets, for example. So they're saving the space on that, but then they're providing all this really amazing green space. I suppose if you took that same thirty-six acres and platted a bunch of R3A lots throughout it on a public street, you could still get quite a few units in, but I don't know that I could figure out if it would be the same.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point, because again, at the commission meeting, there were two different projects being considered that night. The Carden project went first, and so the crowd heard a lot of great things. It's all the, all the amenities essentially as part of a PUD. Then the second case was a conventional residential subdivision, not a PUD. Although there is some R3 in it, but there's about, I think, ten or eleven individual R3 lots that are not PUDs. But, but again, the same, the similar densities would probably be achieved in R3A. And so as those lots build out over time out west, you might potentially see, you know, fifteen, sixteen, eighteen unit building on each of those lots.
And the. Specifically, but specifically looking R3A to R3A.
Right.
Majority of the other agenda item from the Planning Commission, a majority of that neighborhood was R1A, R2, which is single-family residential.
Conventional, yeah.
And the streets within Carden Springs will be owned by that
Correct.
project and will not be the responsibility of Normal, correct?
Correct.
But they will still have to be built to our specifications for depth of concrete and rebar and so forth, correct?
They'd get a little relief being private streets, but they'll still be streets that are designed by a civil engineer with the intended anticipation, you're still going to pick up garbage, you're still going to plow snow. So there's a different essentially set of specifications for the private streets, but again, still be quality streets.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Nord?
Are we ready for discussion? Okay. So with this project, some things that I wanted to point out were, I was at one of the meetings that the developer had with the, with the neighbors. And this was their second development with similar neighborhood. And it was nice to see that the developer made changes proactively because he talked, or because they talked with the neighbors. And I think that's why this is going through so, so smoothly. So some of the things that, that they did that they didn't have to was the three stories, they moved those internal, not next to the two-story houses that were existing. The set packs that they're doing next to the homes that are existing are three times greater than what the town requires. So they went over and above, you know, creating more green space from the existing homes. Another one was all these streets and the interior infrastructure. That's all owned by the developer. This isn't going to be on the taxpayer burden or on the taxpayer shoulders to repave the streets or redo the streets later. You know, to fix the interior water system, sewer system, that's all on the developer. Whereas a traditional development, once it, once it gets handed over, those streets are given to the town for the town to, to take care of later. So this development doesn't put an additional burden on the taxpayers, which I think is great, because this one is what, two hundred and eighty-five? No, this one's four hundred and seventy-seven units. So four hundred and seventy-seven residents essentially that we're adding on the tax rolls that don't really put much additional burden on the town. So whenever taxes are paid or we have to reassess, or we have to create our tax assessment, we shouldn't be asking taxpayers for that same increase that we would if this were a traditional development. So hopefully, this will give us the opportunity to lower property taxes, because this is one developer coming in to do all this, which I think is great. And that's unless this council feels entitled that we get the same amount of increase because of the value that they're bringing, even though we don't have the expense. One other thing I wanted to mention is, they were here a couple of months ago with another development, Weldon, Weldon Reserves. That's two hundred and eighty-five units. And then the three tonight, that's a total of seven hundred and sixty-five homes for residents that this one developer is bringing in. You know, we've got Unit Five that's saying that they need, need additional tax dollars. Well, they're bringing this in by bringing these, by, by, by building all these residents basically at one time. You know, we don't have to wait for multiple builders to come in and do this. They are doing all this. So, you know, Unit Five should be looking to see an increase whenever the, whenever the tax assessor assesses these properties. So hopefully, the town will communicate all these homes that are coming onto the market with Unit Five, so we don't inadvertently, also, so, so Unit Five doesn't, doesn't have their calculations wrong when they're presenting to the public why people should vote for a tax increase for the schools. Because, gosh, the growth is doing. There's another development coming for us here before too long. It's got several hundred more.
Nord, you're getting far afield of the topic.
Okay. It's just developments like this, you know, they start off scary. There were a lot of people that came in and complained before. Now, nobody. It's very silent. So I hope more developers follow the same path you guys did by communicating with the residents, because it makes our job easier. And some of the residents that I know there, you know, they've already said, hey, I would love my parents to come here, because this looks like a place where they can live and be close to their grandkids. So thank you.
Go ahead.
Just a couple of follow-up comments. I appreciate Mr. Nord's comments. I do agree, this is a lovely development, and we're eager to see this move forward. And that's why staff is recommending this. And I believe the development team did a good job bringing this through the process and listening to the neighborhood and the like. I do want to caution council when, if anyone's going to make statements to say that PUDs have no cost to taxpayers. I just want to be careful with that, because we do provide services to PUDs. We provide police service and fire service and water and utility. We provide police service and fire service and water and utility services. And so I just think that's a cautionary statement to blanket say there's no impact to the municipality when there's a planned unit development, which is exactly why PUDs ask to be annexed into the municipality, so they can have access to our services. So are the streets private? Yes, and the like. And building inspections department will be spending staff time out there and making sure they're safe and the like. So there are a variety of ways that PUDs are of value to the community, and we will provide all the appropriate services if this gets approved.
Ms. Lorenz?
Thank you. I was wondering if the chair could direct a question to Mr. Nord to clarify his statement about property taxes going down, I didn't follow that.
Not going to do that, not going to do the questioning between tonight. And that property tax is kind of off the cuff of this particular topic. If you don't mind, I think it's a valid question. Yeah. Mr. Preston?
Thanks, I would like to echo some of the positive remarks about not only what is coming, but the process that has been undertaken to get to this point and ultimately to this development. Give a shout-out to the development team for their approach to the neighbors, surrounding neighborhoods and residents who live there have become, at least in Normal, increasingly, it seems like organized, vocal, interested in what's going on down the street. So it's what the future of not only the neighborhood, but kind of the larger area around the neighborhood becomes. And with that, I think this development team being proactive, being receptive to what the neighbors in both Wintergreen and in Evergreen Villas have suggested and being responsive for that suits all sides well. I'm glad to see it, certainly, but the addition of units at a time the community needs it, probably now more than we have for a long time in recent memory. So thanks for investing in Normal, thank you for the approach to getting to that point, and I'm excited.
I'll be brief. I echo a few of the comments. And we absolutely need the units. It's great to see it moving ahead quickly. And I echo the appreciation for you and the team investing in the town of Normal. We agree, it's a great bet. So we're happy to see you taking a risk here in the town of Normal. And I also do want to echo that this is a much different experience than your last time in our chambers. And we give you and the team a lot of credit for going out there and doing due diligence and work ahead of time to try to, as my colleague said, have a win for everybody involved in the project, so thank you. With that, please call the roll.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. McCarthy?
Aye. And the item passes. When we move on to new business, we have one item of new business. We have a motion to approve a reappointment to the police pension board. And Mr. Preston, would you read those?
I will, yeah, I'll move.
Yeah, thank you.
Now second.
Thank you.
The name in consideration for reappointment to the police pension board this evening is one of us guys, Rick Feischner.
Thank you. Please call the roll. Sorry, Mr. Nord, please go ahead.
Sure, with this appointment for the police pension board, there's been a lot of talk about pensions, you know, and the police pension, those are ones that, oh, they're not as funded as, oh, those that pay into the, I guess, the administrative staff. I would assume this would be somebody that we would want that's going to be very aggressive for our police pension to support them. But my question is, when did the public learn who was going to be appointed so they had a chance to speak on behalf of the folks that were going to speak for our fire department's pension, or for our police folks' pensions?
Sure, and then I'll fill in.
Mr. Nord, I guess I'm going to give you the same answer I have every time you've asked that question in the last few years. The public learned about it approximately two minutes ago when Mr. Preston read that information.
Okay, so I'm going to reaffirm my position, I'm going to do this every time. I don't necessarily have a problem with the person being appointed. I hope he's going to be a strong advocate, but this is a public board, it's a public appointment. We should let the public know so they can come in and voice their concerns. So, you know, like I say, I'm going to do this every time, thank you.
I also want to reiterate for everybody watching that appointments to board are that, are just that, appointments, that they're not elected officials and they're not subject to political process or political pressuring or outside influences. And so thus, the town of Normal has a system for appointing people to our boards and commissions as volunteers. And we very, very much appreciate their service to the town of Normal and all the work they do on behalf. And particularly for boards like pension boards that require a tremendous amount of work and knowledge and insight, not that our other boards don't, but we sincerely appreciate the service of all of our volunteer board members. With that, please call the roll.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye. And the motion carries. Before going further, we, with concerns, we have a public commenter. We have Mr. Ron Olmer, there he is. Mr. Olmer, if you'll come forward. And I think you're well acquainted with the rules, you have three minutes. Please state your name for the record, if you would, please.
Yes, my name's Ron, Ronald Olmer, and I'm a Normal taxpayer. I'm here tonight to add some comments to what I addressed at the last meeting. I'm concerned about the maintenance of concrete roads, newer roads especially in Normal. It is obvious that the amount of money for preventative maintenance has been lacking for a long time. I sent you all pictures of unfilled expansion cracks, joints, concrete popping out. I recently drove by the intersection of College and Landmark a few days, and there were several pieces of concrete about the size of my fists and some as big as about four inches, as an irregular sphere, out on the road that vehicles were driving on. One area where Normal has lacked through the years is they fail to waterproof, winter-proof, whatever you want to call it, the pavement, the concrete pavement in new areas or roads that have been repaved. Given the five-year plan that I saw last time, it looks a little better for road maintenance and preventative maintenance. But still, we cannot resurface roads ever fast enough to catch up on all the need. And one of the big causes is the lack of maintenance on the roads. And you'll see those big cracks sometimes, and they filled in a strip. And then I have seen this last summer, some waterproofing on a few roads. But many roads go years and years with no cracks being filled. Pretty soon, little chunks of concrete are coming out, bigger chunks, bigger chunks. We don't have enough money to resurface roads as fast as they deteriorate in Normal. I have talked to past engineers in charge of engineering, engineering directors for the town of Normal, and they agree with me on this. I have not talked to the current one, and I don't want to get into that, because I like him and I've gotten along on all projects and all with him. But I would hope if he believes what I'm saying is true, he'd speak up. But I was seriously concerned about the five-year plan showing a lack of money to maintain our roads and to prevent them from deteriorating. And so in the roads in Normal, everybody's always worried about what roads are going to be resurfaced. To me, that's not the biggest problem, because we're falling further and further behind. So the way to fall less behind, I believe, is in better maintenance, so fewer have to be resurfaced. Thank you.
Before entertaining the motion for adjournment, we'll move to council concerns. Ms. Harris?
Thank you, Mayor Protim. I don't necessarily have a concern, but I wanted to share a little bit of something that's kind of near and dear to my heart. So I did read that the new climber is under construction at the Children's Discovery Museum. So we're saying goodbye to some old memories for some of us. And we are looking forward to new memories with the new climber. And so hoping all goes well with that. And I can't wait to see what the new climber is going to look like.
We're quiet tonight. Well, I just have one quick one. For those that are very interested in getting updates from the town of Normal about all things emergency and otherwise, there's a relatively new program called Sign Up for Notify Normal. You can receive direct text messages or emails or even calls for the town of Normal about traffic disruptions, snow parking bans, weather events, et cetera, emergencies going on in the community. And then if you go to the town's website, click on the scrolling banner, you can get all the details on how to sign up. With that, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Call the roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Ms. Lorenz?
Aye.
Nord?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye, we are adjourned.